Good evening. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is April 14. It's 5:00 PM Wednesday, and this meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I'll ask our clerk if she'll please call the roll and establish quorum.
Member Desmond?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is Cablecast Live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 16 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, and welcome Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you.
And I'll ask everyone if you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is livestreamed and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial (916) 875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. When I open the public comments for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, clerk staff will begin transferring you into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected when making more than one public comment on a single agenda item or off-agenda matter. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding. Written comments are also accepted. Please send your email comments to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you again for your patience. And at this time, I'll ask our clerk if we have any off-agenda callers. You do not have any off-agenda callers. Thank you. And so we will just jump right into our meeting. I know we probably have some important, a lot of important things to discuss tonight, so we'll move to our first item. Item number one, fiscal year 2021/22 budget study session.
Good evening, Britt.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Britt Ferguson, the county's interim chief fiscal officer. So as you well know, in January of this year, my office initiated the county's fiscal year 21/22 budget process by issuing budget instructions to all departments. On March 10, we provided the board with a second quarter fiscal review of the county's fiscal status, including an estimate of what the general fund's fiscal condition would be at the end of the current fiscal year, that's fiscal year 2021. Fiscal year 21/22 requested budgets were due from departments in my office on February 19. In accordance with budget instructions that we issued, departments' budgets requests included both a base budget and, in some cases, growth requests. The base budget is defined as the cost in the budget year, that is, next fiscal year, of each budget unit's current approved staffing level and programs, less any reductions due to a loss of categorical revenue. The base budget includes the amount needed to fund existing, ongoing staffing and programs, adjusted for increases or decreases in the cost of doing business, and, in the case of certain entitlement programs, caseload changes. Growth requests by departments for new or enhanced programs and services are also part of what departments could propose, and that involved new staffing or enhanced service levels, staffing programs or enhanced service levels. Budget and debt management, or BDM, analysts have now completed their preliminary review of departmental budget submittals, and the county executive team is meeting with department heads to discuss their requested budgets. We've scheduled this study session at your board's request to provide your board with an overview of the fiscal year 21/22 general fund budget and fiscal situation, identify certain budget issues that staff believes might be of interest to the board, and describe how the process will go from here. The study session will also include a new general fund five-year forecast. The general fund's fiscal year 2021 ending available or unreserved, available basically unreserved, fund balance becomes the fiscal year 21/22 beginning available balance, which is a major discretionary resource. As is reported to your board when we presented the second quarter fiscal review on March 10, we are currently estimating that the ending available fund balance could be as high as $172 million. This compares to the current year budget and net available beginning fund balance of $168.3 million and would be the highest general fund ending available fund balance in at least 20 years. It should be kept in mind, though, that this is only an estimate based on a number of assumptions that may not come to pass. In addition, the $172 million available fund balance figure is a result of a number of unique factors related to the COVID-19 pandemic, such as the use of coronavirus relief fund revenue to cover existing public safety salary and benefit costs in fiscal year 1920 and reflects the receipt of at least $99 million in one-time revenue in fiscal year 2020/21. If the $172 million is added to the general fund's discretionary reserves, the unrestricted ending fund balance will come to $220.5 million, as shown in this table.
Excuse me, Britt. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, Britt, I know you've got more to the presentation, but just to be clear, because you've emphasized this, and certainly with the qualifications, this does not include what we may or may not expect from the American Recovery and Rescue Act. This is CARES Act and other funding sources. We got $34 million from the state and things you're going to explain further. So this is what you contemplate, what's immediately known and either been received or is in receivables, and yet there's still another pot of money significant and some other competitive funding that you'll talk to. So this is separate and apart from that. That's correct.
Right. This does not reflect any revenue from the American Recovery Plan that recently passed the Congress. We don't know what that will be, because we don't know what yet the guidance is on how that can be used.
Right.
We do know that one component of that is essentially to backfill revenue reductions, but the Act makes it clear that the base year for that is fiscal year 2018/19 actual revenue. And as you know, our revenue, although we estimated it would come in much lower, actually has not come in, for the most part, much lower, except in certain very specific areas than it was in fiscal year 2018/19. So it's not clear to us that we will be able to use a significant amount of that money to augment our general revenue situation, though it certainly would be available to fund specific programs.
Okay. But 1819 was obviously pre-pandemic.
It was the pre-pandemic year.
By more than a year.
Yes. Yes. But as I think I mentioned to you when we did the second quarter fiscal review, and I'll talk a little bit more about now, we significantly overestimated what the impact would be on some of our revenues.
Right.
We clearly lost revenue. TOT was down for sure. There's no question about that. We lost revenue in certain specific programs, for example, environmental management, which is a non-general fund program, and in certain other areas. But broadly speaking, it doesn't look as though, we're still doing, surveying all of our revenues, it doesn't look like we suffered a significant, we probably will have suffered a significant revenue loss compared to fiscal year 1819. We did suffer a revenue loss compared to what we thought we were going to get originally in 1920 and what we projected we were going to get in the budget, and so that's why we're waiting for the guidance. The plain language of the Act says that the base year for calculating revenue loss is the first, last full fiscal year prior to the impact of the pandemic, and for us, that would have been fiscal year 1819.
Okay. So one other question, then. With the CARES Act money, and we've spent many hours in these chambers talking about the utilization of those monies and the offsets they provided, but also the effort certainly within the public health realm, and so this takes into account those expenditures, having covered those costs at least through the end of the fiscal year, and whether it's been testing, vaccine ramp-up, other costs of the dining-in program, all of those things.
Correct.
Are all accounted for, and you still have the potential to have this fund balance at the end of.
That's correct. Yes. For example, the Department of Health Services, as part of their second quarter fiscal review, projected how much of that they would spend, how much would be spent on those programs for the remainder of the year. It's an estimate, but based on that estimate, along with all the other departments, this is where we ended up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for those qualifications.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, at this point, we have completed our preliminary discretionary, we've also completed our preliminary discretionary revenue and reimbursement projections and are estimating that we will receive $726.2 million in fiscal year 21/22, an increase of $37.5 million or 5.5% compared to the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget level. And I'll be discussing what is driving that increase a little later in the presentation. We have also completed our initial review of departments' requested budgets. These numbers are still changing, because we're still working with departments, still revising them and so forth, but based on that review, it appears that total general fund base budget, remember, base budget, current staffing and programs, base budget appropriations will decrease by approximately $14 million or 0.5% compared to the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget, and base net county cost will decrease by approximately $34.4 million or 4% to $822.4 million. The reduction in net county cost is due in part to a significant reduction in our public assistance caseloads, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later, and also to the fact that the requested budget includes $91.5 million, a $91.5 million increase in semi-discretionary, that's realignment of Prop. 172 reimbursements, which reflect our most recent statewide sales tax growth assumptions. I'll also be talking more about that issue later. Finally, general fund departments initially submitted $54 million in growth requests with a net county cost of $40.2 million. These numbers are also changing, too, particularly since your board provided some guidance during your discussion of your budget policy. So we're going back and looking at areas that we can address some of the issues that you raised. Putting this together results in the table shown on this slide, which shows discretionary resources, that is, available fund ballots and discretionary revenue and reimbursements, exceeding base net county cost by approximately $75.8 million. Assuming all or most of the base is funded, and that's a decision to be made, this $75.8 million would be available to fund growth or add to general fund reserves. I know Supervisor Natoli, you're particularly interested in adding to general fund reserves.
I'm going to go back and watch that tape from March.
But actually, one reason to consider limiting the amount of growth that is funded, focusing on one-time growth, making base reductions and/or increasing general fund reserves, is that the requested budget includes at least $120 million in one-time discretionary or semi-discretionary resources, suggesting that spending at even base levels may not be sustainable in the future fiscal years. And you can see why that is. If the budget includes $120 million in one-time discretionary resources, and the difference between total discretionary resources and base net county cost is $75.8 million, then before you get to any growth, we would be using $44.2 million in one-time resources just to fund base expenditures. To the latter point about sustainability, as we do every year, we have prepared a forecast of what the general fund's fiscal condition could be like over the next six years. It says five years, but it actually don't count 21/22, but really, over the next six years, based on projected changes in discretionary revenue and reimbursements and net county costs. This is important, as you know, because decisions made in one year can make a significant impact on the resources that will be available to fund general fund programs in future years. Given all the uncertainties, forecasting revenues and expenditures into the future can be problematic at best. We based our projections in part on the department's fiscal year 21/22 requested base budget, and the fiscal year 21/22 adopted budget could be different than the requested base budget. In addition, even if the requested base budget is approved as the adopted budget, actual expenditures and revenues will differ from the budgeted amount. We also make a number of assumptions about what will happen over the next five years, such as inflation rates, state budgets, state law changes, union contract negotiations, economic conditions, revenue growth, and program enhancements. Given our inability to predict the future, in many cases, our assumptions may not come to pass. In addition, with all the complexities involved, it is likely there will be differences between what we project and actual numbers, even assuming most of our assumptions are correct. In light of the problematic nature of our revenue expenditure projections, we are providing three different forecast scenarios. All of the scenarios include certain common assumptions, and they are: we use the department's fiscal year 21/22 requested base budget net county cost as a starting point, and after certain adjustments, reduce net county cost by 10%, reflecting the recent historic difference between the adopted budget and actual net county cost. If you go back over the years, really, other than, you know, last year with COVID, that's pretty consistent. It's in the 9%, 11% range. Basically, we always spend about that much less than we budget. We adjust projected net county cost by known or very likely changes in future years, such as increases or decreases in certificates of participation or pension obligation bond debt service costs, increases in staffing and services in the jails as required by the May's consent decree and implementation plan, excuse me, changes in certain obligations, such as the repayment of the intra-fund transfers and fixed asset acquisition fund debt service. In addition to the requirement of the May's consent decree implementation plan, the projections assume that $10 million in ongoing growth will be included in the fiscal year 21/22 budget, that $5 million in ongoing growth will be added in each of the succeeding fiscal years, and that $15 million in ongoing May's consent decree growth, in addition to the amounts included in the implementation plan, will be added to the budget in fiscal year 22/23. County departments have requested $32 million in net county costs funded growth in fiscal year 21/22, in addition to growth related to fulfilling our commitments under the May's implementation plan. This assumes that 1/3 of that is funded in fiscal year 21/22, and that a very limited amount of non-May's-related growth will be approved in future years. The $15 million in additional ongoing May's-related growth in fiscal year 22/23 assumes that new facilities are not constructed adjacent to the main jail or at the Rio Casimenes Correctional Center or RCCC, but that additional expenditures are needed for Americans with Disability Act improvements and our efforts to reduce the jail's population, which will need to be redoubled. The latter is a very real possibility, and in fact, may be on the low side, since the cost of bringing the jails into compliance with the ADA is estimated to be approximately $100 million, and experts have indicated that there would need to be a substantial investment in community resources to safely and humanely reduce the jail's population. We use the fiscal year 2021/22 requested discretionary revenue and reimbursements as a starting point and adjust for certain known changes in future years, like the amount of revenue neutrality payments the county will receive, which is scheduled to go up and then down, and then up and then down over those years. The three forecast scenarios are, the first one shown here, excuse me, they're all shown here, summarized here. The three forecast scenarios are a baseline scenario, and this scenario is generally based on a continuation of the status quo in terms of county programs and services, state laws, state funding levels, and general economic conditions. This scenario reflects solid discretionary revenue growth, consistent with recent pre-COVID historic trends, and generally moderate increases in the cost of doing business, and is the scenario, we think, is probably the most realistic to use for planning purposes. The following are some of the key assumptions used in this scenario. First, the projections assume that discretionary revenue and reimbursements will grow at an average annual rate of 5%, and that's pretty consistent with what we've been seeing over the last few years. The projections assume that non-Cal works semi-discretionary and categorical revenue will generally keep pace with cost increases, or if categorical revenue declines, the county will not backfill those reductions. The projections assume that ongoing cost of doing business increases will be around 3% a year, starting in fiscal year 22/23. This is based on the assumption that inflation will be in the 2% range, which is consistent with recent economic forecasts, although some even more recent information out raises some concerns about heightened inflation. Historically, county cost of doing business increases have increased, exceeded the rate of inflation by about 1%, and you can look back really over just many years, and that just seems to be the case for a variety of reasons. So that's why, even though we're assuming 2% cost of living, we're assuming 3% cost of doing business. The second scenario is a more pessimistic scenario, and this scenario is designed to provide a measure of what the impact on the general fund might be of a reduction in discretionary revenue and/or increase in net county cost. And the bottom line, impact of a discretionary revenue decrease is the same as a net county cost increase compared to the baseline scenario. To illustrate this impact, this scenario assumes that discretionary revenue and reimbursements will grow at an average annual rate of 4% a year rather than 5%, and that's certainly within the realm of possibility, and assumes ongoing net county cost increases of 4% per year rather than 3%. This could be because inflation is higher than mostly all of us are currently projecting, because the county approves contracts with our unions with equity increases or cost of living increases above the rate of inflation, or because semi-discretionary revenue growth does not keep up with the cost of doing business, or the county backfills reductions in categorical revenue, and a variety of other things. There could be a variety of reasons for this. And then finally, we did a more optimistic scenario. This scenario is designed to provide a measure of what the impact on the general fund might be of an increase in discretionary revenue and/or decrease in net county cost compared to the baseline scenario. To illustrate this impact, this scenario assumes that discretionary revenue and reimbursements grow at an average annual rate of 6% over the five-year projection period. And remember, that's an average annual rate. So that means in some years, it could be four, and in other years, it could be, you know, eight, but that's a pretty high consistent average annual rate, rate of 6% over the five-year projection period, and it assumes ongoing net county cost increases of 2% per year. This could be because inflation is lower than projected, because the county approves contracts with our unions with cost of living increases below the rate of inflation, or because semi-discretionary revenue growth exceeds increases in the cost of doing business, which does happen. So that actually does happen. The slide on the screen now shows the projected annual difference between discretionary revenue and reimbursement and net county cost under each of the three scenarios, and the central tendency or average of the three scenarios. As you can see, under the baseline scenario, the difference between discretionary revenue and reimbursements and net county cost starts with a deficit of $34 million in fiscal year 21/22, declines to a $58.4 million deficit in fiscal year 22/23, and then gradually improves to a $7.4 million surplus in fiscal year 2026/27. Over the six years, this is an average annual deficit of $32.3 million. Under the more pessimistic scenario, the difference starts with a deficit of $34 million, declines to a deficit of $81 million in fiscal year 2025/26, and then improves to $70.5 million deficit in fiscal year 26/27. Over the six years, this is an average annual deficit of $66.2 million. Under the more optimistic scenario, the difference starts again with a $34 million deficit, and that's the same under all the scenarios, declines to a $43.5 million deficit in fiscal year 22/23, and then begins to gradually improve, achieving a $10.5 million surplus in fiscal year 24/25, and a $94.8 million surplus in fiscal year 26/27.
Excuse me, Britt. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Britt, I just want to make sure I understand the graph, and anyone at home that may be watching also understand it. The starting point for all four scenarios is a deficit situation, correct?
Right.
But this is just net county cost and discretionary revenues. It's not the totality of the all funds budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because by statute, we have to balance our budget, and if someone were to simply look at this graph and make the assumption that this is the totality of our fiscal condition, they'd say, well, no, you have to balance your budget, so how can you start, in all four scenarios, with a deficit condition and have that deficit condition extend out another three years?
Right. You know, that's a very good point, Supervisor, because I think that, I didn't probably explain that as well as I should. So by deficit, I'm talking about the difference between discretionary revenue and reimbursements and net county cost, but remember that the budget is balanced not just with revenues and appropriations, it's balanced with fund balance.
Correct.
So when you run a deficit, what you do is you spend down your fund balance until that fund balance is gone, basically, or until you start to build it back up. So what this does, when you see a deficit, what you're really seeing is, what this really shows is how much your fund balance will be spent down in every year under these different scenarios.
Okay. So just again, for the public's benefit, this does not suggest that we're going bankrupt or something in the first three years.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't project that.
All right.
It just means that our fund balance will decline, and I'll get to that in a minute and explain what that means. And the reason we look at net county cost, it's just easier to do that. The truth is, our unrestricted fund balance is always going to be determined by how much discretionary revenue and reimbursements we have and how much our net county cost is, because net county cost is really what are expenditures that go against discretionary revenue and reimbursements, and that is what drives our unrestricted fund balance.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Natoli has a question.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on, because I think it's important, this chart, as you've gone through it, and I was going to emphasize the point that Supervisor Serna brought, this really is an unhealthy picture. It's one that tries to project, you know, where your fund balance will be in relationship to net county cost, and you start from a point where, you know, that's not in equilibrium. And I don't know that you can find a year, probably in the last 20, where we were, maybe even the last 40, I don't know. I mean, there's been a few good years in there. And it does not account for something that's not predictable, but through some really rough times, but also through better times, either, as you mentioned earlier, changes legislatively, talk about realignments that came through in the '90s, again in the 2000s, some of which helped us, some of which, you know, dinged us pretty good and continue to, because they have residual, but also one-time monies. Again, I know the caution's been by you and certainly your predecessors to this board consistently, as good budgeters and finance folks would, is that, you know, to build your budget around one-time, you know, only sources, you know, adds additional, you know, risk and jeopardy, but, you know, it would be interesting, not that I'm asking you to do this by any means, but to go back and see in years when, you know, the predictions might have been more dire or more robust, and then you either got runtime monies in receipt or other things hit legislatively, and, you know, the carpet, you know, got pulled out from underneath this. And so I think what you're trying to do, though, is to project, using different scenarios, different assumptions, and give some idea of what those trend lines would be going forward. And I think that's reasonable for purposes of nice discussion, but certainly for, you know, budgeting in the future. I wanted to ask the question, though, Britt. I didn't see the documents, so I don't think I'm getting ahead of you. You know, as we were coming out of the recession and looking at trying to, you know, once again, bring our credit ratings up and certainly meet our obligations and pay down debt that we took on, and as you talked to us a few weeks ago about trying to reestablish reserves or, you know, further bolster reserves, at some point tonight, and maybe in conclusion, could you give us, you know, you've been with us long enough to, you know, have seen some pretty distressed times, and also some of the improvements that came with, you know, economy that was growing and really hasn't been hit as hard as one might have imagined, or we were talking about this time last year, going into the early part of the pandemic and the impact of that. So kind of just, you know, if you could give us some assessment of that, you know, it may not be a part of your notes, but I'd be curious to know. Again, I think you've been, you know, a strong guide for this board and its deliberations and considerations, and I think tonight's very useful, but I think to kind of get some sense about what the picture looks like, and obviously, that's dependent upon some of the things we do or don't do in the months to come, and what others will or won't do to us as well. So I'll just put that as a backdrop, because again, there's a lot of ifs in here, and you can't predict it all, and you give it your best shot, and I appreciate the information.
Right. You're exactly right. These are all estimates, and that's why I preface it by saying, it's not going to turn out this way, right? It's not going to turn down under any of these scenarios. It's to give you a sort of a It's to give you a sort of a sense of, you know, what the possibilities are. As I'm going to tell you, we think it's more likely to be toward the baseline, and maybe a little bit toward the pessimistic side for a variety of reasons, but it could go to the optimistic side. So you just have to be a little bit careful, given what those projections show. In terms of, you know, where we've been, so as you know, and you were here through it, and, you know, I came just after, sort of as we were starting to come out of the Great Recession, you know, we went through some, you know, made some significant reductions. The county made significant reductions. Our revenues dropped precipitously. We were fortunate going into the recession because we had an unusually high fund balance in the general fund, and I'd like to say it was because the board had planned for that, but looking at the record, what appears to me to be the case is, there was the housing bubble, money was just coming in, it really couldn't be spent fast enough, and we built up this really sort of, you know, balance, just sort of because by happenstance we did, you know, we were going through years when our supplemental property tax, which is the current year amount of increase in property tax assessed value that goes on the rule the next year was running at $30 million, which now we're at about $5 million, we were down to almost zero. So there was all this money building up, and that all was pretty much spent.
Yeah, evaporated.
As we went into the, in dealing with the Great Recession. And then, one of the characteristics of the Great Recession, and I think you all know this, was the very, very slow arc of recovery. You know, unlike what appears to be the case with the COVID pandemic, where we had, you know, so-called V-shaped scenario, went like this, and now we're seeing this maybe a K-shaped, but the point is, it went down, and at least for a lot of people, it went right back up. There was a very, very long recovery period, and you'll recall, our revenue picture just improved gradually, gradually, gradually. We funded some growth, we funded some improvements, and we, you know, we started to sort of very gradually build up the fund balance. And then this last year, because of the Corona Vice Relief Fund and certain other things, and really frankly, because we did underestimate the revenue, we used it for that, we got realignment backfill from the state, because they thought it was going to go down, and it didn't go down, but we got the money anyway. We're now in a situation where we are, we do have very significant, for us, not by sort of standards of some of the other counties that we compare ourselves to, but for us, a pretty significant fund balance, but it's basically funded with $120 million in one-time resources. And so that's the issue that we're going to have to grapple with, and I'll be talking a little bit about that, about how do we balance what you've obviously identified when we had the discussion of, about priorities, about the needs of the community that you want to address, and we got that, and we understand that, we're working on that, but how do we balance that with trying to get some amount of sustainability here, given, you know, what we're seeing in some of these projections? So I hope that helps a little bit.
It does. Just lastly, so just on the credit rating, because that's been certainly an impediment as we try to talk about some of the solution sets for things that come along, including lawsuits and trying to make improvements in the jails and so forth. That has improved, correct?
It has improved, yes, it has improved.
And again, through good work, I certainly credit you and those in finance, and obviously decisions this board's been asked to make, but where, how bad did it get, and where are we now?
I can't remember how bad it was. We're at a double A rating now, basically, which is a, you know, a good investment grade. It's not, you know, there's a number of grades up above that, but it's a decent grade. I think the things that have helped us the most is we have built our balance, and frankly, even though it doesn't seem like a lot each year, the paying back of the interfund borrowings, I will tell you, having sat through, I don't know how many different rating agency presentations now, they ask that every time, and, you know, for them, for them, it's like an issue of credibility, right? If they don't think you're going to pay back your debt, whatever it is, then they're going to be reluctant to give you a rating that suggests you're going to do that. So that's demonstrated to them, as we've been doing that now on a consistent basis, that's really demonstrated to them, something that's been a positive for the county. So I think there's a lot of reasons why, you know, we've, you know, it's built back up. There's still a ways to go, and we'd like it to get a little bit higher, I think, but yes, it has improved.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mantra.
So I sort of talked about this, but when revenues are projected to equal or exceed expenditures over a sustained period of time, a fund is said to be in structural balance. When expenditures are projected to exceed revenues, a fund is not in structural balance, and the result is that there is reduction in fund balance. So just to Supervisor Serna's question. And the next slide illustrates that by showing the general fund's projected unrestricted fund balance under each of the three scenarios. You recall from the first slide that we started the current fiscal year with an unrestricted fund balance of approximately $22.5 million under the baseline scenario. That balance would decline to approximately $186 million by the end of fiscal year 2122, to continue to decline to $19.1 million by fiscal year 202526, and then increase to $26.5 million in fiscal year 2627. And you'll see that in all of the scenarios, things get a little bit better in fiscal year 2627, and that's because in that year, there's a large reduction in general fund debt service obligation, almost $20 million in general fund debt service obligation that goes away because the bonds are paid off, or the COPs are paid off. Under the more pessimistic scenario, the unrestricted balance would decline to $51 million in fiscal year 2324, and then go negative to the tune of $25 million in fiscal year 2425, reaching a negative balance of $177 million in fiscal year 2627. Of course, as you know, and I think you pointed this out, Supervisor Serna, the fund cannot actually go negative, so what that would mean is there would need to be expenditure reductions. Under the more optimistic scenario, the unrestricted fund balance declines to $125 million in fiscal year 2324, and then begins to increase, reaching $274 million in fiscal year 2627. So under that scenario, by fiscal year 2627, we'd be somewhat higher than we are than we started out by about $50 million. A projected fiscal year 2627 unrestricted ending fund balance that ranges from a negative $177 million to a positive $274 million illustrates the sensitivity of such projections to the methodology and assumptions used in making them. And in fact, it is likely that the general fund's fiscal condition in any future year will be better or worse than these numbers suggest, since circumstances over the next five years will likely differ from all of the estimates. But notwithstanding this, we believe it is possible to draw a number of conclusions from these projections. First, absent corrective action, the general fund will likely not be in structural balance over the upcoming next six-year period. Again, that doesn't mean we'll necessarily run out of money, we could, but it means we'll spend more than we bring in. As noted, we believe that the baseline scenario is the most realistic scenario to use for planning purposes. The baseline scenario projects an average annual discretionary revenue net county cost deficit of about $32.34 million or 3.8% of projected actual net county cost, and that average annual deficit would have been even higher, approximately $40.3 million, were it not for an estimated $20 million reduction in net county cost funded debt service in fiscal year 2627. Further, if something like this scenario to occur, budget reductions would be required despite the positive fund balance. Remember, it only goes as low as $19 million under that projection, because, as I mentioned, budgeted appropriations are typically about 10% higher than actual expenditures, and that's what needs to balance under the law. You need to balance budgeted resources and budgeted appropriations. And we would always want to maintain at least the general fund's reserve for cash flow. And this table shows what the budget surplus or deficit under the baseline scenario, which gives an idea of the level of reductions that might be needed. Again, this is not saying this is what we needed, but if that came to pass, it gives you an idea of what might be needed. Second, a second conclusion we can draw is although some things are beyond our control, we have the ability to mitigate the potential structural deficit. For example, if no growth were included in the fiscal year 2122 and future budgets, other than growth related to meeting the May's consent decree obligations, or all growth was funded by offsetting base reductions, and/or if program reductions were made starting in fiscal year 2122, or if employee cost of living adjustments were limited, the future could look more like the optimistic scenario. Probably not that optimistic, but more optimistic. So there's other things that could be done, too. The point is, we have some control over where we go in the future, obviously. And then finally, third, we should say this at, you know, most years, we should make every effort to save rather than spend money in order to avoid potential future fiscal difficulties. We know and understand that the community wants, and you want, to address critical needs that are out there, and you will see that when the budget comes out, that we do make an effort to address the areas that you've identified. But just so you understand, that has implications for where the, sort of the fiscal status of the general fund. So in reviewing the fiscal year 2122 base budget.
Excuse me, Mantra, just before he leaves that last chart.
Yes.
Britt, could you go back to the previous chart just for a second?
Yeah.
That was projections. Do you have a chart that would take us back since the recession, so coming, say, 1112 of, you know, again, recognizing this past year, when we're in a bit of anomaly, to say the least, but, because, you know, you made the comment about, you know, spending more than you take in, and recognizing what you said earlier about, you know, recession growth, how, you know, and again, it's not a predictor any more than probably anything you've outlined here, probably even less than, but it does show, again, you know, certainly as we attempted to recover, to reestablish some of the service levels, programs that have been cut to build back, do it smartly, but I think recognizing limitations and drastic reductions that were taken, obviously, in all the way through 1011 timeframe. So again, I don't know, you know, what it would tell us, but it just, as you were looking at this chart, and I was just curious, looking back, if you could maybe apply at least that.
Yeah, we could put together a table that shows what's happened between discretionary revenue reimbursements and net county costs since, say, 910 on, and you'll see on balance that we have spent less than we brought in, because that's why we were able to gradually increase that fund balance. Not by much, which is why it only increased gradually, and some years it didn't happen, but on balance, over that time, it did. That's how we got to, before, you know, the balance before the last year, I think we were up to the highest we'd been since the Great Recession, and we were about $70 million, and we sort of gradually, and, you know, we'd added to general reserves, we'd created the, you'd created the general reserve policy, we'd added to reserves, which we then reduced as part of the recent reductions, but yeah, so we had, and I'll get a slide that shows that.
And we did build back. I mean, recognizing, you know, how deep those cuts were, not just with layoffs, but with our partners, and certainly in human service and health service delivery, and a lot of other areas that, and I guess the last point I would just make on that, I think it kind of relates to, and what you'll bring us, you know, in a few weeks, but where we maintain, you know, pretty steadfastly, these silos as related to general fund discretionary and areas that either are enterprises and/or have, you know, other funding streams that, you know, run hot and cold, you know, kind of protected those areas. And so I think, again, as a part of that conversation, we had this, you know, a few weeks ago, but I just think it might be helpful, it didn't require a lot of work to kind of at least show, chart that out.
Yeah, it's a good question, and I will, I actually have that information, so I can provide it pretty easily, so.
Okay, thanks, Britt. Thanks, Mantra.
So in reviewing the fiscal year 2122 base budget information, we've identified a number of issues that might be of interest to the board. The written report discusses many of these issues, but I'm just going to highlight a few of them here. I'm also going to talk briefly about some other fiscal issues the county is facing that are not addressed in the written report. If you have questions about any of the base budget issues that I don't talk about, though, please feel free to ask questions, and I know, of course, that you will. So first of all, so the first base budget issue I want to talk about is what happened, is happening with our discretionary revenue and reimbursements, and that's thrown on this slide here, which is sort of hard to see up there, but it's in your packet. As I mentioned at the start of the presentation, we are currently projecting that the county will receive $726.2 million in discretionary revenue and reimbursements in fiscal year 2122, which is a $37.7 million or 5.5% increase compared to the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget, but only a $12.1 million or 1.7% increase compared to our second quarter estimates for fiscal year 2021, our estimates of actual revenue and reimbursements. And the reason for that difference is that when we put the fiscal, as you know, we've put the fiscal year 2021 budget together, we were projecting significant reductions in sales tax revenue. In fact, in fiscal year 2021, not only are we now projecting that sales tax revenue received this year will be 5.6 million higher than budgeted, but as mentioned in the second quarter fiscal status report, our fiscal year 2122 sales tax revenue estimate includes $14.4 million in one-time prior year revenue due to our underestimating the amount of sales tax revenue we would receive in fiscal year 201920. So that's on sales tax. However you look at it, the main reason for the increase in discretionary revenue is a $20.2 million or 4.3% increase in secured and VLF and LOU property tax revenue. This compares to roughly 6% increase in the fiscal, between the fiscal year 1920 and fiscal year 2021 budgets. And as I mentioned during the second quarter fiscal review, for the last few years, the annual CPI increase for all property assessed value has been at the 2% maximum allowed by Proposition 13, but for fiscal year 202122, that's already out, we know what it's going to be, that CPI increase will only be 1%. So that made a significant difference, and you can see, you know, even 1% of secured and VLF property taxes is a large number.
Excuse me, Britt, excuse me, Britt, I'm sorry, I wanted to go back to the sales tax. You were predicting, or your assumption was a 15.8% increase, future increase. Was that based on just, how did you come up with that number?
So compared to, so the number, well, that 15.8.
You were projecting an increase, further increases in sales tax. Was that based on just sales tax or legislation at the state level?
No, so that's a good question. So what we do is we monitor our sales tax revenue, and we also have sales tax consultants, they're called HDL, they provide this service for many cities and counties in the state, and they monitor what's happening statewide, and they actually look sometimes on an account-by-count basis what's happening in the county, and they also have an economics consulting firm that is a subcontractor to them, and they project what's going to happen with the economy, and they give us a projection of what we think it's going to be. Then we look at their projections, and we look at what we've got so far to date, and then we look at the historic track record of their projections versus what actually happened, and we sort of calibrated a bit to come up with that projection.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt that.
Yeah, no problem. As you know, non-Cal works semi-discretionary revenue is the realignment and Prop 172 revenue that the board has some flexibility to allocate to different programs within certain parameters. It can often be used interchangeably with net county cost. We are currently projecting that the county will receive approximately $651 million in non-Cal works semi-discretionary revenue in fiscal year 2122, an increase of $76.4 million or 13% compared to the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget estimate, but a $12.8 million reduction compared to the second quarter estimate, estimated actual fiscal year 2021. And we're actually in the process of revising that estimate right now, there's just some new data that's come out from the state, and we're going to increase it a bit and put it in reserve until we are comfortable with that number, but it's going to be around that number. You may remember, though, that the second quarter estimated estimate included both an estimated $37.9 million increase in revenue actually received in fiscal year 2021, and a $51.3 million in one-time prior year fiscal year 201920 revenue. In the prior year, if the prior year revenues excluded, fiscal year 2122 non-Cal works semi-discretionary revenue is projected to increase by 39 million or 6.4% compared to the second quarter estimated actuals for fiscal year 2021.
Excuse me, Supervisor Nottoli had a question.
As you're running down the chart, on the Prop 172, though, that's restricted to three departments, correct? Sheriff, district attorney, probation are the only ones.
Restricted for public safety uses, and so that is defined to be the sheriff, probation.
District attorney.
The district attorney, well, I'd have to check on that. Certainly the sheriff and probation, I think the district attorney, and if we had a fire department, it could be spent on fire services, too, but we don't, so counties that do can spend it on that, yes.
So those increases, whatever they are, or decreases, which then, I guess, people are looking to backfill the county, but go directly to those departmental budgets?
Well, not exactly directly. So what we do is we allocate that money like we allocate realignment money, and between those departments, it has to go to those departments.
Yeah, between the, yeah.
And what we do is we build, as we essentially use it more or less interchangeably with net county cost, so Proposition 172 revenue, just like realignment, most realignment revenue, has a sort of a maintenance of effort requirement, a non-supplaining requirement, but what that has been interpreted to mean is that you can't, you can't go, you can't reduce your funding for non, your local funding for those programs beyond the level at which that was at the time you first started getting that money, which was quite a while ago.
Yeah.
So we actually have a lot of flexibility, and over the years, in some cases, we've So, we actually have a lot of flexibility, and over the years, in some cases, we've backfilled reductions in net county costs, in some cases, we've used net county costs to back, like, when we thought it was going to go down this last year, we use net county costs to backfill that reduction, just like we did with realignment, and in some cases, we use it to fund new programs, so it's a combination, but we actually allocate it out.
Okay, so we allocate it out, but just to the eligible departments, and so...
Just to the, yes, just like realignment.
And again, it may free up funds to what you just described.
Right, yes.
And also, there's a, within, again, the law enforcement, we had the police services assessment that goes on all new residential construction, and that gets allocated directly, you're not calling that out correctly in the budget, so we see what that is, again, it's a nominal amount.
It's not a huge amount, but it goes into the sheriff's budget, yes, into their patrol function, yes.
And basically, that is there forever, so to speak, I mean, that's...
Yes, and you know, as areas develop, that should grow potentially, but for now, it's not a huge amount, yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Supervisor Natoli, Brett, before you go forward, can I just quickly ask you on sales, on property tax, are we, and we didn't anticipate that there would be a dip in revenues this year, but we weren't sure for the future, do we have any insight on the direction of property taxes at post-COVID?
So, the only thing that, so, in, as we do our property tax projections, we meet with the assessor and with the Department of Finance, with the Tax Collector's Office, and with the clerk recorder, because they deal with, you know, real property transaction recordings, to sort of see what's happening, what's on the horizon. Now, you know, you can only look out so far, but the last time we met with them, what we're seeing is not, certainly not a reduction related to COVID. In fact, if anything, I think we might be seeing property values going up as people are looking to move, for example, maybe out of the Bay Area, because they can now, and telecommute and move out here. We have seen a reduction potentially in some of the commercial properties because of, because of, you know, for the same reason, but in terms of residential property, the market is strong. One of the things we've been waiting to see, and I talk to the assessor about this pretty regularly, is, you know, there's a lot of sort of development or pre-development, residential pre-development activity going on out there. We haven't seen it significantly yet hit our growth in assessed value, which will come as, you know, more homes actually come on the market and so forth, and get built and come on the market, but with all the pre-development activity and stuff that's going on, we would hope to see that happening, you know, somewhat soon, and that's, it's hard to know when, they're not projecting it for '21, '22 to a significant degree, but in, hopefully in future years.
Thank you.
So, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the, you know, the $51 million in one-time prior year, we talked a little bit about how that would happen because of the, because of the accrual surplus from the prior year, and so that will carry over into this year, but again, it's one-time money, it's part of the one-time money that we're using to balance the budget. So, as we noted in the second quarter fiscal status report, we estimated that approximately $20.3 million in 2021 non-Cal works semi-discretionary revenue would not be included in the fiscal year, utilized in fiscal year 2021, and that is carried over in the fund balance, and that's added to the $65.1 million that we projected to actually get in '21, '22, and results in the $671 million allocated as reimbursements, in this slide here, reimbursements to the various departments to fund their base budgets. So, this results, this results in the $91.5 million increase in semi-discretionary reimbursements compared to the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget, and a $22.5 million or 3.5% increase compared to the fiscal year 2021 adjusted budget, reflected the adjustments that you approved as part of the second quarter fiscal review. And in fact, using, and so what we did with that was we used it to offset net county costs in the base budget, and that actually makes sense, because as you'll recall, a significant portion of the large reduction in semi-discretionary reimbursements reflected in the 2021 adopted budget was backfilled with net county costs. So, now that we've, now that we've got, it turned out we were wrong, we've got additional semi-discretionary reimbursements, we're using that then to offset net county costs, which helps free that up to use, that's part of that $75 million you got left over to spend on growth or put in reserves. Okay, so another issue is salary and benefit cost increases. Salary and benefit costs for the 9,300 employees in general fund departments, obviously a major cost driver. In the requested fiscal year '21, '22 base budget, general fund salary and benefit costs total approximately $1.47 billion, a $43 million or 3% increase compared to the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget level. This increase is due primarily to an assumed 1% cost of living adjustment for all employees, step increases for some employees, as you know, all employees who are not at the top step of the salary range generally receive a 5% step increase each year, a 4% increase in the county's share of employee health insurance costs, and a 7.4% increase in the county's contribution to the Sacramento County Employee Retirement System, or SCURS. And the increase in the SCURS contribution is partly due to the fact that fiscal year '21, '22 is the first year of a two-year phase-in of the impact of a reduction in SCURS' assumed rate of return or discount rate from 7% to 6.75%. You recall, a few years ago, SCURS reduced their discount rate to 7% and phased it in over three years, and now they're reducing it further. It's a pattern that we're seeing, PERS is doing some of that, other retirement systems are doing that, as they're basically trying to align their long-term assumptions about rate of return with what's actually happening in the markets over a sustained period of time.
I have a question about that, Brett. I always assumed, and I may not be informed, that part of what we were doing was compensating people for, you know, when that assumption is lowered, helping to pick up some of that cost so that those who were promised, we made promises, we were able to keep those throughout their employment life or whatever. You know, I always assumed it was, you know, that we made adjustments during those years of PEPRA and reducing the benefits and getting back to something more realistic, but that with new employees, we started with a more realistic benefit package, but for those who had promises, we're working with them to keep the promises we made, which I think is good. Are we working our way through that, or, I mean, how much longer till we work our way through that? It seems like it's been about eight years or...
Yeah, so this was the pension reform that was, that Governor Brown initiated, the legislature passed, and so basically, the county has about five tier, retirement tiers for employees depending on when they were hired, or, well, five for miscellaneous employees and I think four or so for safety employees, depending on when they were hired. And so depending on when they were hired, it's what tier they're going in, it determines what benefit they get, and what benefit they get determines what the cost is, because the more generous the benefit, the higher the cost. We also have different cost-sharing arrangements with different unions and so forth, and different, for different employees, but in any case, yes, we are gradually moving from, we, I forget, I just saw recently the number, I forget what it is, but we're now moving, you know, there's a reasonable number, substantial number of employees who are now in the, what's called the PEPRA tier, the tier of employees who are not, who are, you know...
Not drastically impacted by...
But, so it is having an impact.
These changing assumptions.
Yes, it is having an impact, it is, but it's gradually, we still have a lot of employees who are, are pre, legacy employees, pre-PEPRA employees, so, but it's a mix, but yes, it is gradually moving that way. And as we have more retirements and people leaving and more people hired, you know, we'll see more of that, more of that happen. The impact of the reduction in the discount rate by SCURS takes that all into account, because they know how many people are in what categories, and so what that, what that, what happened, that increase is sort of the overall increase, obviously different, depending on what tier they're in, the rate increase is different for different tiers.
And I think it's good that SCURS is changing the assumptions and being realistic and not leading us down a path toward insolvency, so that's, I think that's good.
Sure, it's the prudent thing to do, sort of for long-term planning for them, for sure, and for us, so, you know, our pensions are obscure, right, so that's a good thing, so. So, with regard to the COLA assumption, as you know, the agreements with all 30 of the county's employee bargaining units expire at the end of this fiscal year, and we are currently in negotiations on new agreements. So, at this point, we don't really know what the fiscal year '21, '22 COLA will be. We based our COLA rate assumptions on the most recent Consumer Price Index data available, based on the formula we use. To the extent that contract negotiations result in higher COLAs, those costs would increase. Your board is aware that, like Sacramento, that Sacramento, like other counties, the state also anticipated a significant reduction in realignment revenue in fiscal year 2021, and provided counties, as I mentioned, realignment backfill money. The reduction in realignment was far less than we all anticipated, but the state still provided the backfill revenue. This revenue came from the state's general fund and was not technically realignment revenue, though the state mandated that counties use the money to fund realignment programs. We included $34.17 million in realignment backfill revenue in the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. Since this was one-time revenue, the fiscal year 2021 requested budget, base budget reflects a reduction in revenue in those departments that received the revenue in fiscal year 2021, and those departments are shown on this slide. As you can see, the largest reductions are in the IHSS provider payments, health services, and sheriff's budgets. Generally, these reductions have been offset in the base budgets for these departments by an equivalent increase in net county costs or non-Cal works semi-discretionary In 2020, the legislature...
Excuse me, Supervisor Kennedy has a question.
Thank you, Chair. Brett, can you go back to the last slide, sorry about that?
Yes.
So, right here, we have the backfill revenue from realignment, the reduction, $17.86 million for IHSS, and is that, is that something that is our discretion, I mean, that's our choice, or are other counties doing similar with that?
So, we, yeah, so each county had the ability to decide, as long as it was targeted at the realigned programs, each county had the ability to decide where to put that. We've chose that because it was sort of one place we could put a lot of money and not have to keep, you know, put it in a lot of different areas, and so far, we've been able to totally fund IHSS provider payments, our local sheriff costs with realignment, not using any net county costs, so we just thought it made sense to put it there.
Okay.
And as I say, we're backfilling it now with, since we do now have more realignment money, we're just backfilling it with that in the '21, '22 budget.
Okay, thank you.
So, in 2020, the legislature and governor approved AB 1869. This bill repealed the authority of counties to charge offenders 23 different fees for things like administering probation and mandatory supervision, processing arrests and citations, and administering home detention programs, continuous electronic monitoring programs, work furlough programs, and work release programs. The bill also repealed the authority of courts to order defendants to pay the costs of the public defender. The provisions of this bill take effect beginning July 1, 2021, and included an appropriation of $65 million to counties to backfill revenue lost from the repeal of these fees. The state has not yet provided information, as they typically don't when they do this stuff, on how much backfill revenue each county will receive, so departments have just reflected the revenue loss in their requested budgets, base budgets, as shown in the first table on this slide. As you can see, the largest revenue loss will be to the sheriff and probation departments. The base budget for these departments currently reflect a backfill of these revenue losses with net county costs or semi-discretionary reimbursements. Once the state provides information on what the allocation will be to each county, revisions to the budget will be recommended. And the reason we're sort of cautious about plugging in some number that we don't know what it's going to be, is no one has really been able to explain, no one from the state has really been able to explain to anybody in the counties where they came up with the $65 million, and if you look at what our loss is, the 10, the 10 point, roughly $10 million, if you look at what our loss is in revenue, and you look at what our share of the state population is, if we got, if we got a share of the $65 million based on our share of the state population, we'd get about $2.5 million. So, we don't know whether they just really, you know, know exactly what everybody's loss is, and it just, we're unusually high, and so we're actually going to get that much, or they just picked a number, like $65 million, and we're actually going to get $2.5 million or $1 million, we just don't know, nobody knows. So, we're just going to have to wait and see.
You'll get that for five, five years, though, is that right? Whatever you get, assuming you get something?
Five years?
It's a five, they were going to fund that backfill for five years, wasn't that the legislation?
Yeah, I believe so, yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, so hopefully, you know, we'll just wait and see what it is, but I'm sort of skeptical we're going to get what we lost, so.
Excuse me, Supervisor Desmond, before you move forward, I had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just another clarification on that, to piggyback on Supervisor Natoli. So, is that $65 million, was that in the actual legislation?
Yes.
Or is that something that's in the governor's budget, proposed budget every year?
That was in the legislation, $65 million.
In the bill, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So, also, as I mentioned earlier, the Human Assistance Department is projecting a significant decline in assistance caseloads and costs in the current fiscal year and in fiscal year '21, '22 compared to the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget level. The second table on this slide summarizes the recent budget and estimated actual expenditure history in the Human Assistance Aid Payments Budget, and again, for the public, that's the budget, it includes all of our assistance payments, mostly entitlement programs, foster care, CalWorks, general assistance, those types of programs. And as you can see, in this fiscal year, costs are projected to be $32.5 million lower than budgeted, with a $13.2 million reduction in net county costs, and in fiscal year '21, '22, costs are projected to be $34.5 million lower than the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget level, with a $15.3 million reduction in net county costs. The cost reductions this year contribute to the relative high projected general funding and fund ballots, that's one of the factors. For fiscal year '21, '22, this reduction frees up both net county costs and realignment revenue that can be spent in other areas. A concern we have, obviously, is whether this reduction in fiscal year '21, '22 will actually come to pass, and if it does, is it sustainable in the future years. The Human Assistance Department initially speculated that at least part of the projected caseload decline is due to the fact that department offices were closed to the public in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, making it more difficult for some people to apply for assistance, particularly for general assistance, which is funded entirely with net county costs, and people who get general assistance, that, you know, they're often people who don't have a lot of ability to, you know, go online and fill out forms and stuff, and so there, they come into, they come into lobbies. More recently, however, as the department's offices have reopened, they have not seen a caseload increase. This may be due in part to project room key assistance and to the deployment of economic resources such as stimulus payments and enhanced unemployment benefits, which impact eligibility and the need for county assistance benefits. Additionally, the closure of schools and organizations that provide referrals has contributed to decline in foster care caseloads. To the extent that pandemic-related conditions change, though, it is possible that total expenditures and net county costs could be higher than the level currently reflected in the requested budget, so there's a risk area there. We're just going to have to wait and see what happens.
Excuse me, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, thanks, Brett. This is just remarkable to me, this information, and I know you're making a lot of assumptions of your attribution for this. Have you, do you do any comparison with other counties, are they seeing a similar decrease? Okay, so this is not unusual, an anomaly in Sacramento County? Okay, thank you.
So, again, I'm not going to talk about each of the base, that's all the ones I was going to actually talk about here. I'm not going to talk about each of the base budget issues identified in the report unless there are specific questions, but I did want to mention some other... to mention some other fiscal issues that are important to keep in mind. Some of them are directly relevant to the fiscal year 21, 22 budget, might be reflected in growth requests, or maybe not, but they're directly relevant. And some are longer-term issues. And I'll just go through those real quickly. And they include the following. Of course, we've got the implementation of the Mental Health Crisis Response System as an alternative to police response, which your board has directed the county to undertake and is being worked on. We've got additional staffing and service enhancements in the jails we committed to in the May's Consent Degree Implementation Plan that we presented to the plaintiffs, not, not the construction of the facility part, but just the actual staffing and other parts, both in 21, 22, and 22, 23, 23, 24. And we've got additional May's Consent Degree costs that will be incurred to come into compliance with the consent decree without building the correctional and medical mental health services facility and making the SB 1022 improvements in the RCCC. And that will be needed, needed to bring the jails into compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. So we've got those issues we'll have to address over the next few years. We'll need to deal with making improvements to county buildings and parks and roads to come into compliance with the ADA. There's a substantial need out there that we haven't been able to address. We will need to address the significant backlog in facility maintenance needs, including needs at the Mather Community Campus, which I know some of you are aware of. We're going to need to address a large backlog of unmet regional parks capital needs, which I know Supervisor Natoli has raised on a number of occasions, and we, we've heard that. We're going to, we're going to need to address the need to make additional investments in road maintenance to keep our road conditions from getting any worse, and addressing the significant backlog in road maintenance needs, again, an issue that your board raised when we had the discussion of budget policies, and we heard that, and we know that's an issue of concern to you. We're going to need to be implementing SB 823, the realignment of juvenile offenders from the State Division of Juvenile Justice to the counties. That takes effect starting July 1, 2021, and we don't have any choice. We're going to have to deal with that. We're going to need to decide whether to continue probation's pre-trial release assessment and monitoring pilot program that is scheduled to the end of this fiscal year, along with most of the funding for that program. We're going to need to complete the second phase of providing all county law enforcement personnel with body cameras, as well as addressing the workload impact of those cameras on various county departments. That's one of the things we're learning as we've implemented that, that has implications beyond just those departments, for example, the DA, public defender. We're going to need to address high caseload levels for social worker and child protective services, emergency response, and extended foster care programs. We're going to need to deal with concerns about call answering times in the sheriff's dispatch center that are exceeding state standards, and how we're going to deal with that. We're going to need to address what are very large, and I know you've heard us talk about this before, very large and growing unfunded liabilities in the county's liability and workers' compensation funds. We're going to need to deal with how we're going to possibly pay some amount as a judgment or settlement in a hardisty case once that reaches a certain point. And finally, your board has made clear that you want the county to gauge even more aggressively in addressing homelessness and its impact on the community. And there's certainly a significant need out there. We're going to have to work on how, we heard that, and we're going to have to work on how we do that, both in the coming fiscal year and in future fiscal years.
Excuse me, Britt. I just have a couple of questions. You said unfunded liabilities, but I thought our fund was, I thought we were 82% funded and-
In the, in the liability fund and the workers' compensation-
Are you talking about workers' comp?
Workers' compensation liability, right, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I also wonder, back on attachment one, we've moved beyond that, but I just had a quick question about registrar voters had a reduced expenditures because it was an off-election year.
Correct.
Is there, does it impact the county if there's a recall election, cost-wise?
Yes.
And are we taking that into account? And what would that-
We haven't, we haven't yet factored that in, because, you know, until relatively soon, we wasn't, it's not sure for now, for certain even now, but it's looking more certain. And so, no. So, yes, the, the registrar voters has developed a cost estimate for that, and I can't remember what it was off the top of my head, but we may have to, that may be an augmentation we'll have to look at in the, in the budget.
Okay. And also, in the paragraph that talked about economic developments base budget, I didn't see any mention about economic recovery. And that's something that some of us were advocating for. It wasn't mentioned.
So I think, so I think there is, so if you look at the money in the American Recovery Act that the Congress passed, that is one of the allowed uses. And I think once we see what the guidance is, that will be where we'll probably be looking to, we're going to be proposing to you a approach to putting together a plan for that at your next meeting, not that specifically, but just overall, not just that, but over all those funds. And that is, you know, we get 300 million in addition to the various dedicated funding sources. And so that's, I think, where we would look to be-
Still out there. We don't know what we're getting, where it goes.
We don't know exactly what the rules are yet. But clearly, that's an allowed use. It's clearly stated in the bill that that is one of the things that they're allowing to use that funds, those funds for.
Yeah, I'm really hoping we can do that. Okay. Supervisor Natoli, thanks, Britt.
Yeah, Britt, just on, on the point, and obviously, that's for very soon future discussion, but didn't the act, I think I read where it would allow for expenditures through 2024 or 2020?
Yes.
So, again, talk about one-time monies, but we also look at the ability, just as you presented charts earlier this evening, about, you know, what projections might be under certain scenarios, that, again, it may not be a permanent source, but, you know, if you have three years by which to allocate and, and to, you know, spend in whatever areas are allowed, but certainly selected through the processes we use here. So that gives us some ability to, to flatten that out a bit, but also then to, you know, continue that to, forward to, to years when, you know, there are maybe other unknowns, as there will be probably a year or two out, but-
Sure. And that's right. And of course, this is very different than the situation was when the CARES Act was passed. We were right at the depth. I mean, we'd seen everything, you know, our revenues plummeted, and everything was looking bad, and we were, every jurisdiction, we looked, we thought we only had a year, and every jurisdiction was looking, how do we shore up our revenues? And how do we deal with all this stuff? And it was just, we're, I think we're in a much better position now because we realize that the impact on revenues isn't as bad as we thought. You know, it was impacted, and we want to sort of certainly maximize the, our ability to help the county's financial position. But we have, and we have more time. We have three years to spend the money. It's not ongoing, but it is sort of limited duration, I guess I would say, as you point out. And so we have a little bit of time. We don't want to wait too long, though, because what we've heard from you and what we've heard through the community is there's a need out there.
Yeah.
So we want to work to put a plan together, to be able to move quickly. But it's not necessarily spend it all in one year.
Okay.
It's look at how can we have the most positive impact in the areas that you've identified as your priorities. And we'll be talking about that with you.
And I guess I alluded to my comments earlier, and I know it was in your report, but there may be other funding streams within that act that would allow us as provider of health and human services and, and other areas that are yet reflected, because we don't, because we don't know what those are, what they are specifically. But that would allow us maybe to capture other dollars for housing needs, or for homelessness, or for health, you know, again, could be a variety of things.
You raise a critical point. One of the critical things that we're going to, and when we propose our approach to you next meeting, you'll see, is one of the critical things we want to do is recognize just what you say, that there's the 300 million we're getting, but there is $1.9 billion in all these different plans. There's, there's rental assistance, there's, there's assisted public health, there's airports, there's all these, there's different things. And so what we, what we want to do is we want to have a clear understanding of what all the different programs are, so that we can target our money to be most effective in not doing money, doing things that we could use other money for, or someone else could use other money for. But how do we, how do we make the most critical use of our money to get to the goals that you want to achieve? And you'll see that that's part of our strategy we're going to be proposing.
Smart budgeting. And again, thank you for your insight. Thanks.
Much appreciated. Thanks, Supervisor Natoli. Ann Edwards, County Executive.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that the voter registration has estimated the recall election to cost about 4.4 million.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you.
So, next steps in the process. So, the budget and debt management analysts are finalizing their review of departmental budget submittals, and the county executive team is reviewing budget requests with department heads. As I've said, we're almost done with that process. And we'll be making recommendations to the county executive on where to make reductions, if, if, if any, and where, and what growth to fund that will go into her, that she'll consider in making her decisions on the recommended budget. One of the challenges that we are grappling with, and that you will be grappling with when the county executive presents you with her recommended budget, is how to balance community needs for service, as I've talked about, the organizational needs for the infrastructure and resources to provide those services, and what we need to do to meet our legal and compliance obligations without overcommitting one-time resources to ongoing expenses. So at this point, our goals are generally fund departmental base budgets, but make reductions that have a limited impact on services, fund a limited amount of growth, focusing particularly but not exclusively on one-time growth, including growth that addresses homelessness, road maintenance, capital and technology needs, growth required to meet legal and compliance requirements, including the May's Consent Degree and juvenile realignment, and growth to address the most critical health and safety needs. And then finally, increase discretionary reserves, but at a less robust, less aggressive rate than in the proposed budget pauses, which your board, in your board, clearly told us you wanted to sort of shift some of that emphasis to enhancing services to the community. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Britt, for the thorough presentation. One of the things that I think is going to be different this budget cycle, there may be several things, but one, I think, is on all of our minds, is just the, the growing interest by the community in our budgeting process, and how that's been expressed last year and as we get closer to, to June. So, what if, and I don't know if this is best directed at you or to our CEO, but I'd like to, to hear about what the expectation is from our executive team about accommodating, whether it's People's Budget or, or others that want to be very much engaged in explaining what they believe are the community's needs in the context of our budgeting exercise. I don't think that this is going to be business as usual, quite frankly, this go-around. I think we're going to, you know, have a lot more back and forth, and, and hopefully, we're all of a similar mind to be as accommodating as possible, to at least listen very carefully, not, not prejudging anything, not, not saying that, you know, we would always agree. But it seems to me that the, the, the exercise of budgeting is, is going to be different. And so I'd like to hear from, I guess, Ann, about how we're going to do that.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And I think that this year, we've already started doing things differently. We had the budget workshop that Britt presented back in, was it February, January or February? This is the first year we've had as many meetings as we have had in leading up to the budget. I think we're all willing to talk to and meet with, I've had conversations with the People's Budget folks. Happy to have more. So we will definitely engage in, in conversation with them as much as they want.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. I too have at least one meeting scheduled with folks that are interested in, in sharing their, their vision for how we appropriate, you know, scarce resources. But, you know, I know that that's, that's kind of one end of a spectrum in terms of how you bring into the fold of, of this really important part of what we do every year to, to do the listening. But is there even an opportunity to have some consideration for perhaps designating a certain amount of, of our discretionary funding that could be the real focused part of a conversation in terms of doing things different, in terms of how we allocate those resources, and then leave it up to the will of the board to, to make that decision? That's a question.
So, I would say, ultimately, it will of course be county executive's decision. I would say, I've, I've never, I've seen that tried in other jurisdictions. I've never believed it was the right thing to do. I think that under both the Budget Act and under the Charter, and really appropriately, it's the job of the chief executive officer or city manager, county administrator, recommend a budget, which reflects, in some cases, policy direction that the board provides, and the board to, you know, change that budget and take into consideration anything that you guys, that you want to take into consideration, but not, it's not appropriate, I think, for staff to just come in and say, here's a pot of money, what do you want to do? That's really abdicating our responsibility. What I do think, and I can say this because I'm, you know, interim, and I'm not going to be here much longer, what I, what I do think is that realistically, the way to involve the community broadly in the budget process is not in any specific fiscal year's budget, but to engage in a longer-term strategic financial planning process, where you can take the time outside the very tight timeframe constraints of an annual budget process where departments are hanging on, will they get this money? Won't they get this money? The fiscal year is looming, revenue's up, revenue's down, and engage the community in deciding on sort of long-term budget priorities that your board can consider and adopt. And then that that can drive the decision-making process that staff uses in crafting a budget that we bring to you, because you're, you're never going to catch up, I think, if you do it on a year-by-year basis. It's important for, in order to really involve the community, whether you're going to reach, do surveys, reach out to all your, you know, citizen participation groups, all your, all your advisory committees, all the different constituencies out there, and involve them in a process. That's a, that's a multi-month, that's maybe a year-long process. It can be done. I've seen it done. I've been involved in doing it. But that's where you really involve the community in the process, not, not in any individual budget process or by setting aside a certain amount of money.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that. I, you know, I'm not going to speak for the People's Budget Group, however. I would suspect that a general response to that would be, well, hold on, you know, we've been explaining this for some time now, that we are interested in participatory budgeting, essentially. And so, you know, I, I just feel like if we were to give that explanation, as the board speaking, not as staff, that there'd be a lot of pushback, that, that, you know, that would feel to them, I think, like kicking the can again. So, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting a wholesale transfer of authority from the CEO and her expected duty to recommend a budget to the board. I'm just suggesting that perhaps we might want to consider doing something besides kind of what feels like lip service on occasion, to actually have the community, you know, be able to look at the, at the recommended budget once it's approved, and the final budget in September, when it's approved, that they have had an impact on the, the shaping of priorities as it's expressed in our, in our budget. So, I for one am going to be consistent from, you know, here forward in terms of that position. I think it's an important one that we need to, to consider this, starting this cycle, not, not, you know, next year or the year after. I think this is the, the right time to really think carefully about how we take very seriously what the community's been telling us in terms of what they think the, the priorities, where the priorities lie to best serve them. So, thank you.
I just want to say that I attended your budget workshop, and I thought you did an amazing job. And one of the things that I really appreciated was that you spent time and discussed some of the important intricacies of the budget that maybe the community doesn't understand. And I think that went a long way to, to help them realize there's more to this budget than, than what they might have realized. So, I really appreciated the job that you all did on that workshop.
Thank you. And I understand Supervisor Serna where you're coming from, and this year was sort of the beginning stages of that. And I, I hear that that's, you're not feeling like that is enough, but we've- And I hear that that's, you're not feeling like that is enough, but we've done a lot more this year than we've done in previous years, and there's more to do, I agree. I think the timeline we're on right now is going to make that very difficult, other than to hear more. We have heard them, we know what that particular group wants. I also want to add that in many years ago, every year, we used to, early on, reach out to many community organizations, all of our advisory boards, and get input from them so that we had a input from the broader community as well and not just a small number of groups. So we may want to reconsider doing that in the future as well.
Much appreciated. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. And certainly appreciate both the questions, comments from my colleague, but also the responses by both Britt and Ann. And I would just say, having sat through many, many budget cycles, that, you know, this year is an improvement upon, I think, as it relates to, I think, engagement with folks and certainly spending some time listening, recognizing, I think, what, you know, Britt said, that there are time limitations and, you know, you barely have the ink dry on a budget in September and you're beginning to work towards, you know, the next budget year. And so, sort of, yeah, I appreciate those comments, I think those certainly are practical ones. I guess what I wanted to say, and you just hit on one of the points, Ann, that I think in recent years, either by design or not, but we really got away from engaging those folks who are in appointed capacities by this board and certainly are reflective of much of the community sentiment, not entirely, obviously, but have, you know, advisory, in some case designated legal authorities, as relates to some of those boards that, you know, relate to resources, to programmatic and service delivery, and I think serve this, you know, community very well in those capacities. And so I do think that's very important to engage those folks, you know, on an ongoing basis, respect the role they play, respect the role this board, certainly the authorities and responsibilities that you and Britt and others have in bringing the budget documents to us. I do think, though, and again, you know, as I've thought about it, sat through many sessions, certainly read documentation you've brought forward to, certainly this year and in past years, it seems to me that, you know, a lot of times we talk in terms of growth or backfill or projections and so forth, and those are all real terms and they have real meaning. But I think that to the point that Supervisor Serna made, and it maybe will take us a bit of time to get this in gear and certainly respecting the investment of time that, you know, folks who, you know, represent, you know, the People's Budget advocacy and the work they've done with their own survey outreach, but that, you know, looking to a time in, you know, when we can, beyond just talking about growth, talk about it in terms of investment, of reinvestment, of taking initiatives, of innovation, and, you know, recognizing there's always going to be these demands for dollars, that are both internally, certainly externally. And what we're about, in our role here, obviously, is providing, you know, services and programs that, you know, serve the people of this county, all million six hundred thousand, you know, some of them very directly, others indirectly. And so I guess, kind of, as I've reflected on this, and I think we've learned a lot through COVID about how we can interact with folks through, you know, various mediums and so forth, that, you know, survey instruments and ways to reach people, and again, we have a very diverse community and certainly, you know, the folks that are, you know, affiliated with, in line with the People's Budget and have done that work reflects, you know, a certain amount of information that's very important and it's a critical piece. But this is a big county, there are many people, there are, you know, diverse views and certainly, you know, participating in a budget hearing in June or in September and whether physically coming in and certainly we've accommodated through people through phone calls, those are important ways. But I think that there may be, in going forward, I would, I guess I'd like this, you know, as we continue to work through this, to reflect on how we can really establish that participation in a way that reflects modern ways of communicating, but also helps the board in this decision-making. Obviously, is the five elected representatives, ultimately is going to rest on our shoulders. But I do think that there are ways to continue to, you know, refresh and to reinforce and to engage both, you know, people's views and opinions, but, you know, getting that sense of the community. All of us have that from the work that we do, but it's not, you know, it doesn't cover all the aspects. So I think that, thinking about that, and again, obviously, certainly, you know, in your role and I think, you know, Britt's experience, but the experience of five board members and then talking with folks who, you know, again, are willing to engage, obviously they are advocating from a particular point of view or for certain areas, but that's not unimportant. And I think there are ways to engage folks and to do that in an ongoing way, to build that into the process. And maybe part of it is a, not just strategic planning, but an effort that then ties back to budget priorities and to, you know, resources and has a longstanding and kind of, you know, a framework that gives us the foundation to work off of. So I'd certainly be very interested in that, in, you know, in trying to incorporate that with, you know, I've got six weeks till we see the, you know, recommended budget, but I think even one more workshop, as you, you know, as this becomes clearer, not to burden folks with having to have a hearing. This is very positive, though, in the sense that we're doing this, we're doing it publicly, you know, we're, you know, building a base of information for this board, but for the community to understand, one, what this looks like for this upcoming year, but also taking that, you know, taking that into account. So, you know, I'm very interested in, you know, in how we, you know, would ultimately craft that, you know, I don't have, you know, a particular, you know, set of, you know, you know, views on that, but I think there are ways to actually, going forward to, you know, really reinforce our budgeting process and, you know, encourage our participation, but also, you know, recognize what it means to, obviously, what we have to make, decide here and what you bring to us as recommendations, too.
And I agree, I think we can improve our outreach activities over the course of the year. I would be reluctant to say with confidence that if we do that now, it will have an impact on what gets presented to you, because that's coming in six weeks. And I frankly don't think there's enough time for a comprehensive outreach effort before, because it comes to you in six weeks, we have to have it done long before that for, you know, printing and other sorts of things. But I do think-
Yeah, I would just say, but there's an opportunity, you know, with, we've talked about some other monies that are going to come down that, you know, maybe one time, but, you know, there's, again, that can be reflected and kind of goes to the point about innovation and investment and reinvestment into, you know, and maybe that's the opportunity, because again, we're not going to see a lot of that probably before, you know, early summer. Again, September will come around very quickly as well, but I think there are ways to engage because that, you know, again, how we frame that and how we use those dollars will set a tone for, you know, and it may actually help us in a way that would allow to build that capacity beyond setting money aside for the rainy day, to help us catch up in some areas where we scramble every year and to actually, you know, in those areas, whether it's human service delivery, or it's in public protection, or it's in areas of, you know, economic development, whatever it might be, I think, you know, this may be an opportunity that won't come around for another generation, you know, and out of something that's been very devastating for the community as it relates to the pandemic and COVID, so.
So as Mr. Ferguson indicated, we are going to bring you next week a plan on how we're going to strategically use the 300 million, and part of that is an extensive outreach component. And so we will definitely be doing that for the Recovery Act money.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have right now.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, ma'am chair, and, you know, thank you to Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Serna being such a, you know, an advocate for the People's Budget. I've met with some of them as well and, you know, we may not always agree, but, you know, I tell you, I think, just in my short tenure on this board, you know, I'm very proud to be a part of the board and where we've come together to actually implement things, I think in response to a lot of the concerns that may not be specifically budgetary, but more policy in nature. I mean, the Citizens Review Commission that we're going to be initiating here, more oversight of the Sheriff's Department, the Alternatives to Law Enforcement Response, a Crisis Response System, these are great, I think, really progressive, good policies that this board's going to be implementing. And I, you know, had this discussion with some of the folks that I met with that, this is because of, you know, us, I think, listening to them and being responsive to their meetings. So I'm very proud of these things, that, you know, the resolution this board passed prior to my tenure on declaring racism a public health crisis and establishing the Women's Commission, and those are, some of these include the opportunities for, as Supervisor Natoli, I think, mentioned, for that kind of direct engagement and input to the board about future policies we make. So I know we'll be having these discussions about, you know, specific, you know, budget priorities and where the funds will go, but I think we've done some really great things in response to the community, and there's always more to be done, certainly, but just really appreciate the efforts of my colleagues here and yours as well. So, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Are you, is your presentation concluded?
It is, ma'am chair.
Okay, thank you, Britt, very much for all that information. At this time, we don't have anyone in the queue to speak, and so I'll ask about if public comments, if we have any.
Yes, you do have four verbal public callers.
Okay, let's bring their voices to the table.
Okay, thank you. Please send the first caller. Hi caller, please start, please start your public comment, you have two minutes.
PJ, 40-year resident of District 1. I just added one comment that popped into my head while listening to the presentation. Regarding Prop 172 Public Safety, couldn't some of that go to alternatives to 911 as they would be offsetting public safety duties, but still participating in public safety and to increase their budget enough to be fully operative? Just a thought. I noticed that in government section, but government code section 30052, it states that public safety services for Prop 172 includes but is not limited to sheriffs, police, fire protection, county district attorneys, county corrections, and ocean lifeguards. Now subsection C states the Board of Supervisors of a qualified county shall send a copy of the resolution adopted pursuant to subdivision to the controller. So it would depend on the language used for Sacramento County specifically, but I'd imagine that that could be readily updated if it were more restrictive than the government code regarding public safety services. I would also like to thank that, I would also like to ask that the county start putting forward methods for participatory budgeting to ensure the county budget matches what communities want to see investments in and not the type of public input that checks a box and results in no real modification of anything the county was already planning on doing, but the kind where actual material spending is modified to more closely align with community priorities. I would agree with Britt that a one-year timeline doesn't really work, but possibly a two- to three-year timeline, which would guide the county for X number of years beyond that. We realize the budget is a long process, we realize it's complicated and a multi-step, multi-level process, and my understanding is that the People's Budget doesn't have its priorities, it is representing people surveyed throughout the county and their values and priorities. I've seen the demographic information from their presentation to the board in September of last year, and it clearly represents a wide swath of the community. At the end of the day, we want, the community just wants a genuine input, feedback and guidance from the community that is considered in a meaningful way, that genuinely is looked at and incorporated into the final version of the budget. We need participatory budgeting, we need community involvement in a robust and real way so we can ensure that our billions and taxes are being spent appropriately-
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
So to make sure that our billions and taxes are being spent appropriately and are in line with our values. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller.
I'm going to talk.
Hello caller?
Yes, hello.
Please start your public comment, you have two minutes.
Yes, hi, my name is Sheer Lane, I am with the Atrium 916, we are Creative Innovation Center for Sustainability. We're all about building the micro-manufacturing here in Sacramento and doing it right by looking at the eco-friendly ways that we can do it and incorporating local Sacramento creative. I just was listening to the meeting up until a certain point, and I didn't hear anything about the creative sector, the micro-manufacturing business sector, you know, the creative sector has been really hard-hit during COVID, and there's a lot of businesses that have gone down and we can't even perform or do anything, and all the businesses that go around performances and events and festivals, there hasn't been anything. And we don't have a, Sacramento County doesn't have an arts commission, and just wondering what's happening with that, if something's happening, just would love an update on that. Thank you so much for all that you do to share with the Atrium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am chair, if I could just, on that, we were doing a report back on what we're going to do with the Arts Commission. We left that before you were in your position, Ann, and I think this board is expecting a presentation back on what's going to happen since-
I don't know exactly when we're coming to the board, but I know I've been having conversations about that, so let me get back to you.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller?
Yes.
Please start your public comment, you have two minutes.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone, my name is Kula Konig, I'm a resident of District 3, and just enjoyed listening to the discussion today. The things that, you know, rang in my mind, or a couple of key words, were vision, framework, and equity. And I think that, you know, Supervisor Serna started by saying, you know, let's do more than lip service, you know, let's make sure that people have an impact on shaping the priorities, and I think that's exactly right, that, you know, oftentimes when we have these workshops, last time, a lot of people called in, but we didn't get to see how the comments that we made were, would be translated into that final budget. And so that speaks to a level of just kind of, if people are going to engage, like, what does that mean? But also, more importantly, it's just vision. CEO Anna Edwards said that, you know, people have many viewpoints, and that's fine, folks have many viewpoints, but I think that the county, the board has to figure out, what's your viewpoint? Is it a viewpoint of equity and social justice? And that means you're making decisions, so, about the budget, about hiring practices with the most vulnerable and historically excluded communities in mind. And that also means going above and beyond to let stakeholders know what is going on and providing them a space to participate meaningfully. So again, yes, there's many viewpoints, but it also should be a framework of equity and making sure that those who are the most, they're the most historically excluded and the most vulnerable, that they are taken into account. So I just really wanted to bring that up. Also thinking about, you know, the community engagement, I worked, the county is actually, it's in statute, supposed to have a community engagement plan for each department, and I've talked to various chiefs of staff about this, and nobody knows that it's in the general plan. And I've worked with someone who's done a lot of work, actually, she's put together what a county plan for community engagement will look like, and we have a whole document, and I would love to be able to share that and work on that with you all and the community, maybe not for this budget cycle, because I understand that-
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Sure. Anyway, I understand that it's already coming to a close, but I, there is a framework out there that we can work on for greater community engagement. And yes, I agree with Supervisor Desmond, we have there. I am pleased with how the board has been doing a lot of these things on alternatives to 911 and then not having the jail expenses, so I did want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller.
[phone rings]
Hi caller, please start your public comment, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, my name is Karen Humphrey, I'm part of the Sacramento Act Local Organizing Community on Homelessness and Housing, and I'm a resident of District 1. And I'm a little frustrated, I would like to second the comments that were made by Ms. Konig and by the gentleman a couple of people back about the whole process that's been attempted in the community around budgeting. And the big important piece that was in the presentation that's just gone on from the budget chief has been about potential growth items, and he ran through the list of what those items might be so fast that there was like no opportunity even review them. I have a, we asked back in September for a more extensive set of budget workshops where you could really explore some of the issues, allow some of the community groups that have been working on this to provide the kind of input that could be more visible in the outcomes than maybe they will be. But I suggest that between now and the time that you actually present the budget, it might be a really useful workshop to simply bring those potential items that the board will, that the county staff will be looking at as possible quote "growth areas" and areas of challenge in long-term funding. Bring them more specifically to the board, allow people to comment on some of those, and maybe that would help both staff and the board come to some note- come to some notions of what are really the most important priorities to be addressed. I fully, I was a public official. I fully understand the strains on budgets. But we need to have a much more interactive process. I think you had a small start toward that this year, but there was, three or four months have been lost where there could have been more public discussion than there has been. So I really would encourage you to have at least one very targeted workshop around the areas that people really are looking to see some changes in this year's budget, and invite those who've been involved and active, and get as many people to the table as you can, but do it in a public meeting with the Board members present.
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
That's all I have to say. I really thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, please start your public comment.
Hello? Hello?
Please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Carla Black, and I'm in District Three. And I just wanted to add to your guys' budget, meaning election integrity, and if you guys could put some money and focus on that because of what happened with our national election in 2020. There's also current California litigation going on right now, and if I could just read you some of that. This is with Election Integrity Project, and it's about 44 pages, a 44-page document. And it talks about voter role, how California has been noncompliant with federal law in terms of voting, Dominion and Smartmatic's voting software has been compromised. And right here, so on March 1st, 2020, prior to the primary election, EIPC sent a letter to defendant Padilla, warning him that we have identified in the state of California voter registration file, over 22,000 Californians that appeared to be voted, or sorry, registered twice. Some registered three or four times. Of these, we estimated that over 5,000 duplicated registrants have been mailed more, sorry, mailed two or more vote-in ballots during this election. On April 20, on April 28th, 2020-
You have 11 seconds.
Anyway, the point is, I can send each one of you this 44-page document with the litigation with voter registration and the corruption. So if you guys could focus some of the money and budget on our county election integrity, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello?
Hi there. Thank you Board of Supervisors for taking my call. My name is Keon Bliss, and I'm also a member of People's Budget Sacramento. And I really am, want to lift up Supervisor Serna and Natoli and Kennedy as well, and all of you for having this discussion and really recognizing the need for more participation and equity and transparency within the budgeting process. It's really critical that we, and I think important and possible, to get this process developed here this year, even if it's not fully rolled out by the end of the budgeting process. But we are setting ourselves up for a really, a really big opportunity for next year, for having more community input, especially from those in the community who have been traditionally left out. Want to echo my friend's comments and previous commenters about the need for making sure that when we're talking about, you know, participatory budgeting, that we're like really focusing in on how democratic the process is and which community members really gets to decide how to spend part of this budget, who gets to participate in this process. Equitable participatory budgeting is deeply inclusive of a broad cross-section of community members in all phases of the processes, from both formation of a steering committee to actual voting on what comes into, like, of what goes into the budget, including those who identify as Black and Indigenous or people of color, immigrants regardless of their immigration status, individuals experiencing houselessness, and individuals with mental illness, as well as the queer and trans community, as well as young people. It's really critical that we're not going to the business as usual, or the usual stakeholders that are often mentioned nebulously within these conversations, but are actually prioritizing these people that have been traditionally left out of the budgeting process, as well as the priority setting for the budget. As well, and I mean, this is something that continues to happen across the country. It's already happening in New York City, where 100,000 people decide how to spend $40 million of this budget.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
It's happening here in California, in Oakland, yes, and Vallejo. So really want to encourage to continue this conversation, and also wondering whether, when is the next budget workshop where the public can formally participate and ask direct questions like we did earlier this year? Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes your public comment.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you Chair. I want to say, and thank you to my colleagues too, in talking about opening up the budget process more. You know, this participatory budgeting is something different to everybody that you talk to, and it's also different in every jurisdiction that you're talking about doing it in, just because of the size and the complexities are different in different jurisdictions, and cities are different than counties, the jurisdictions in the school boards and so forth. So it's not a one-size-fits-all, but I believe that as one or two of the callers said, that there are models out there that we could find that would, would work better. But what I will caution about is that, you know, when I first started bringing it up, it was about this time last year for this budget cycle, and I feel like that that was dismissed, not by this administration, but by a previous administration. And whatever it looks like, and it doesn't, it's not likely to be perfect the first time out. What we did this year was more than we've done in many, many years. Wasn't perfect. It didn't go as far as maybe we could or we should. But we started far too late. And I brought it up again and again and again at public meetings, and I was told by the former CEO that, yes, we're going to do that. We're going to get on that. And we waited so late that we ended up having no choice but to do a very watered-down process. So my caution is, and my suggestion, and my even direction from a Board member, is that we don't just talk about it, get through the budget, and then take six months off and then start talking about it again. That we start talking about it now, and we get through this budget, and we start implementing it as soon as possible because it's going to take a heavy lift. It's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take time and thoughtfulness to do it right, and the participation of the public, and that takes time. It's just, my cautionary tale is that we were here a year ago, and I was bringing it up, and I got a lot of promises, but it ended up, we were pushed into a corner. I don't want to be in that position again. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. I just want to also add, I remember in the past when Supervisor McGlashan was here, and we used to have community meetings, and she would bring county staff from different departments out to the district who would speak. And at budget time, she would bring someone out who talked about the budget and answered questions about the budget. So the good thing about that was it was our opportunity to bring those people into our community. So I know right now it's a special time with COVID, and we have Zoom meetings, and maybe for some people Zoom is easier, and maybe we can look at what can we do, how can we also participate? Because I like the idea of, you know, finding a way to make sure that we're, you know, opening up those conversations to anyone who wants to be involved in them and participate in them. And so maybe it's a matter of how do we do that, and how do we make sure we're reaching out to all, to everyone on that. So I just wanted to add that. And Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So at the risk of explaining the obvious, I understand the concern about timing and wanting to do it right. I don't disagree with that part of it. And there's, you know, as has been mentioned liberally here tonight, there are different ways to do it in terms of a participatory process for our budget. However, the alternative to not doing something as soon as with this budget cycle, both for recommended and final budget, is that I can kind of already picture kind of what's going to happen, which is those that have been patient and asking for a paradigm shift of sorts to bring the community into the discussion about our budget are going to end up gravitating to individual Board members and bending their ears hard. And then it becomes, you know, in a setting like this, when we're talking about the recommended budget or final budget adoption, it becomes, you know, perhaps even to a member, five different opinions about where to shape, you know, enhance priorities. And I know that's, by design, that is a part of what we're expected to do. But it then becomes, I think, a much less cohesive and thoughtful process to arrive at what those priorities are, because then it basically becomes the product of, you know, lobbying each of us. And to me, that's, that's the way it feels it has been done in the past. And just because that has been the way in the past certainly doesn't mean that it should be the way of the future. And quite frankly, I'm of the opinion that we could actually arrive at, I think, some real, you know, purposeful changes in this county in terms of where we leave our priorities as reflected in the budget, so that, again, the community feels not just like the box has been checked, as someone said, but that they actually have their fingerprints on it. They have, they have some pride of ownership of the budget as much as the CEO, as much as the Board members and the department heads. I don't think that's unreasonable. So I just, again, at the risk of pointing out what probably all of us understand in the back of our minds, is that I don't expect the people's budget or others that are interested in participatory budgeting are going to accept necessarily that it can't be done in some way, shape, or form this cycle. And so, you know, I'm going to expect to hear from those community advocates and activists, and probably have many meetings between now and six weeks from now to hear them, hear them out sufficiently and understand what their priorities are.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Natoli?
I just wanted to build on some of the discussion and certainly comments here. And, you know, maybe we can't avoid, you know, a fractious process at times because of the nature of, you know, how revenues are projected, and, you know, I think certainly priorities as they're brought to us from, you know, a variety of perspectives. But I think, you know, to Supervisor Kennedy's point, I mean, the seeds for, you know, what we're, part of what we're doing here this evening, you know, were planted a year ago. And I think what occurs to me is, and maybe this goes beyond just Anne, you, and Britt and the team having to, you know, shoulder all this, is that, you know, if this Board were to direct, and you have contract authority, assuming you have sufficient direction, to, you know, you know, bring some, you know, resources to bear that would assist us in crafting, you know, the approach and the process here, again, because I think somebody else said earlier, participatory budgeting may mean different, I think Britt may have said that, may mean different things to different people. But, you know, spending some time here, talking about what sort of process we want to employ, how we want to deploy resources to actually do that, do it in a way that's, you know, meaningful, that is, I think, you know, is sensitive to the outreach that needs to be done to the best of our abilities. And, you know, that will come with some costs and some, obviously some associated commitment of energy and efforts. But, you know, we're at a point where we've got, you know, a budget that's over $4 billion, and some of those are very directed funds, so really don't have a lot of them outside of us giving the stamp of approval up here. But there are discretionary revenues, as we talked about. We've got some opportunities. And I think, you know, one of the things that's been learned over certainly the course of the last couple of years and some of the commentary, and I think, you know, as reflected in comments this evening, is to, you know, evolve our process. And one is still going to involve obviously departmental engagement. That's the leadership. It's going to require decisions by this Board. But, you know, I'm very open to the idea, and I think this community, at least the number of folks we're hearing from, is asking for, you know, more in-depth engagement. And then, you know, to Phil's most recent point about, you know, they'll gauge whether or not, you know, that, you know, reflected in actual decisions were made. So I'm interested in, you know, putting some effort and, you know, and again, if it means dedicating some resources. And again, if we need some help to do that, obviously you've got people that are offering to participate and to be a help in contributing to that. But I think how we structure that, and maybe some of what's been done, I heard other communities reference, and I've seen documentation to effect, and, you know, try to get what, you know, if, you know, is, at least from the onset, what we think is the best process to engage and to do that. So again, I don't expect this evening you're going to have those answers, maybe not in the most immediate future. But I do think that's where we need to have, to my point about having a foundation. Let's build this foundation and, you know, and get the direction that you need, and let's, you know, let's begin in earnest, I guess. I would just leave it at that. So maybe you could respond, yeah?
So yes, I completely agree that we can, should, and will do a better job of outreach moving forward. You know, some of the actions we took this year Supervisor Kennedy are because of the direction that you did give us. We need to do more. We will do more. We're going to start with the allocation of the $300 million in terms of a more extensive community outreach process. We have to have the budget book together in the next three weeks and ready to go to print, three to four weeks. So I wouldn't want to have an open session for the public to weigh in because I believe it would feel even more superficial because there wouldn't be time to change any recommendations that we make. Now I could offer an alternative solution, is there was some mention about growth, and that we didn't have enough discussion about growth tonight. We could push growth discussions to September and have more extensive outreach between now and September on how we might spend growth money. Now, there's some risk in that because there are some growth items that are critical and probably should happen sooner rather than later, but that is an option for your consideration.
Could I just, so maybe, maybe I wasn't real clear. That's not the first time of that. But what I'm thinking about is that as part of, and maybe as part of the budget recommendations, that you, you know, brings, you know, again, framework's been talked about here for how we could, you know, certainly, as I said, we're going to have discussions this year. We're going to approve a budget this year. You know, you're well into that. And some of the speakers who spoke this evening have acknowledged that. But I think having, and maybe there's a budget item that goes behind it because it requires some resources. But, you know, if nothing else, and, you know, beyond the commitment to say we're going to do things differently and better, and I believe that when you say that, as to, you know, do we engage, and I'm not talking about a consultant here, but if there's been done in different places, somebody, again, I want to understand what those, you know, processes are, what they look like. Does it, does it transfer here, or are we looking at doing something differently? I heard Ms. Konig and her comments talk about, you know, you know, someone in general plan policy had talked about this engagement process. But it needs to have some structure to it, and it needs to have some timeframes that then fit with the budget work that goes on all year long, but obviously becomes very intense in the next few weeks, and then certainly over the course of the summer as we lead to the adopted budget in September. So I guess I'd be looking, at least as one member of this Board, to certainly engage as best we can for the here and now, but to have, you know, the ability to give clear direction with your input and that of Britt or anybody else, and certainly the community, as to how we can put the framework, again, using that word, in design so that we know it's incorporated into the process going forward, and that, you know, here's the time schedule, here's what we hope to accomplish, how we're going to engage, the outreach- schedule, here's what we hope to accomplish, how we're going to engage, the outreach. And again, it may come at a cost, and I don't put that all, as I said, all on your shoulders or Britt or his successor or anybody else, because there's a lot of work that goes on internally, but, you know, so let's do this, and if it's, if we're going in, you know, a bit of a new direction as we evolve our budgeting process, to, you know, have a clear understanding what our expectations are, but also certainly hearing from the community, and then also knowing any limitations, and as you've just clearly pointed out in responding to my comments a moment ago. So I'd be very interested in seeing that as a part of, you know, what you maybe bring to us in June, but it could be sooner than that, as we're going to have conversations the next couple of weeks about, you know, the money that'll be coming down from the federal government. So I'll stop with that.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand the alternative that you just mentioned, Anne, because it sounds oddly familiar to what I had suggested in my opening comments about kind of roping off some segment of the budget to have a very focused conversation about perhaps having that part of it really be affected by community input, that being, as you mentioned, the growth parts of different departmental needs, that kind of thing. So I just want to understand, would this mean that you would come with, by design, with intent, come to the board in June with a recommended budget that has no growth for certain departments, saving that discussion for the summer during which we would engage with the community on, I keep on calling it roped off, that there's got to be a better way, but that part of the budget that could actually reflect the community's input in September?
So I want to be clear, I was not suggesting that we rope off money and sort of hand that to the community to decide how to spend it. What I'm suggesting is, we have, I think Britt said, $54 million, or a large sum of money in growth requests that departments have submitted, and that's not all of them. There's some of them that aren't quite complete and in. So we have far more growth requests than we can fund. There's some things we have to fund. We have to fund growth as it relates to the May's consent decree, and there are actually a number of things like that that need to fund.
And collectively bargaining labor expectations.
Right, right. And we also don't want to spend all the growth. I mean, we do need, I think it would be, it would be responsible for us to set some aside for reserves as well. But what I'm suggesting is getting, having a more robust public process on looking at the growth items that we have come up with and think are really important, and getting feedback from the community on whether they support those growth requests, have different growth requests. So I am sort of roping around just the growth piece of it and not base budget, because base budget just contends with keeping current services and staffing going. But again, I want to say there is some risk to that, because there are some things that I think that many in the community, and maybe even some of you, want us to get going on, for example, homeless services. You know, we are contemplating some growth around homeless services, and if we wait till September, then those won't start till later than that.
But I think, when you first suggested it, didn't you say that you can perhaps surgically find the different growth requests to put into a summer participatory budgeting exercise and perhaps have other growth that is actually adopted in June, so that we don't wait on important things like homelessness services?
We could, but it's going to make your decisions more difficult, because there's, you will be deciding on some of the growth in June, which then, when you get to September, your choices will be more limited, because you've already spent money in June.
And I just want to be clear, I'm not, and nor have I, suggested that we give a blank check to anyone. That's not our, that's not our job. But that should not be confused with, you know, listening and empowering, listening to and empowering the people that we represent to make sure that their voices are heard, and that it's not just, you know, a hollow thing to do, and actually, if possible, assuming that there's the will on this board, not just with one member, to actually affect change in the budget and change in the service delivery that comes with that. So, you know, I'd be interested in what you're suggesting. I understand it makes for work, and it makes perhaps for, you know, more possible contention, but if that's, if that's something that we honestly believe could be pursued and thoughtfully between now and, you know, September, I guess, again, for only certain parts that you've mentioned, I'd be interested in exploring that.
I also want to add, and I don't mean to sound difficult at all, but as Britt said, it is, one of my primary responsibilities is to present a budget. And if there are things that I believe are critical to the county, that I believe you also think are critical to the county and that are differing, I will present to you what I think is the best thing for the county. I will also share with you what the public, so that you can decide, but I do still think it's my responsibility to present to you what I think is the best budget.
Absolutely. No argument here. But, you know, again, it's our responsibility to really make sure that, you know, the people that we represent, you know, have a voice and are at least empowered enough to have time with their representatives to share what they think their priorities, the priorities of the county should be. And I'm not saying anything is, you know, concluded ahead of time, but again, you know, and this goes partially to Supervisor Kennedy's point about timing, it's, I still go back to the fact that, you know, it would feel to me like we're kicking the can if we just had a standard, you know, budget process. And I know we're not getting a standard budget process compared to if we had someone different in that seat. That in itself is a refreshing and welcome change in terms of the, I think, the very careful and deliberative and open ideas that you're sharing with us tonight, Anne, and in private conversations with us. But I just, you know, I think the sooner we can do it, the better, and if, you know, if there are others on this board that feel similar, you know, I would hope that we might be able to make it worthwhile to engage the kind of process you've outlined for the summer.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I just want to add that I am not opposed to the idea of doing a better job with, you know, communications and allowing people to participate in the, more actively in the process. I do think it's important that if we do it, we need to make sure that it's an opportunity for all the districts and everyone. I also wanted to say, if there are some priorities that we needed to get done in June, I hope we're not going to put those off. So, you know, maybe there's a, we can manage that, and I know there's the, also the idea of truing up the budget, there are things that happen after June that get true, you know, that we true up in September that make, that change the picture a little bit. So it's not the end of the world to wait for, on some of it until September, I'm assuming, but I would hate to delay something that we needed to get going in June. So I'm not sure what you have in mind, but I'm not opposed to looking at what opportunities we have, I mean, or what we, how we can address some of these concerns.
Well, that is the challenge with it, because we'll be making proposals to you for growth that we think are important, but it will be without the context of everything else. I just, I guess I should say I'm not recommending this, but I do offer it as an alternative.
Yeah, I personally think we hire experts at the county who manage the budget, and I think we, you know, we hope to make sure that the public process is as robust as it can be, so that the public is not only communicating through us as their representative, but in public comment and in the workshops, and if there's, maybe there's a way we can expand the, you know, or have a, you know, expand those workshops to an educational format over time that can get that done, but.
I also want to add that I want to, that I will make a commitment to develop with my team a community engagement and outreach process, so that we have a robust process moving forward.
I know we've received awards, haven't we, for the way we've done our budget and made it easy to understand and read, so that sounds good. Moving forward, maybe you can let us know what you have in mind. Thank you. Okay, with that, I don't have anyone in the queue to speak, and I believe we're done with the, this item. I want to thank you, Britt, for that extensive summary of, and it really helped me. I had a lot of questions that you answered tonight, so thank you for that. And we'll move on now to our next item, please.
County executive comments?
I think I've said enough.
You said a lot, yes. Thank you. And do we have any board members with comments or?
I would just say, to just make a note, we had an evening meeting around this particular topic, and that in and of itself was, you know, a positive step forward as well. So again, you know, obviously, the substance is of, you know, top importance, but I think the fact that we even had this meeting scheduled an hour, when hopefully it provided better access for some folks, that's, if not all folks, that's important.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.